At this time, I'll call the Alexander County Board of Commissioners Budget Work Session to Order, May 15th, 2017. We'll recognize Vice Chair Ronnie Reese for the invocation, and I will handle the pledge of allegiance. If you all please rise.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to you today thanking you for the blessings you've given to us. Thanks for Alexander County, for all the good things you do for us. Help us tonight as we come together in a meeting that have wise decisions that would take Alexander County forward. We pray for all of our citizens, for EMS, emergency folks, police, Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, and all our EMTs, rescue squad. Just protect them as they protect us each day. Be with these that are here tonight and give them a safe trip back to their homes after a meeting. We'll give it all the glory and honor of this meeting to you, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll hear any Commissioner reports. So, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, just like to give an update on the Thomas E. Bevler naming of our jail facility and Sheriff's Department. That's moving along real good, and the date's going to be June the 2nd at 6:00. Everybody put that on their calendar and make a special point to attend. I think there'll be some dignitaries there, and should be a good thing. Bevler family will be represented also. And just remember to put it on the calendar. I'm sure it'll be in the paper also, but I wanted to make mention of that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would make just one brief comment. As I have looked through this budget workbook, I just wanted to say there are obvious, there's a lot of work goes into these requests, and that's duly noted by myself, as well as I feel sure the other Commissioners. Some of the requests, I feel like were, some of the requests are very reasonable, and other requests are not. And I think we all wish that we had a bottomless sack of money and could give everybody what they want, but this is the real world, and that can't happen. But at least being for myself, I appreciate the work that the department heads and other staff members that have put time and effort into this notebook full of exciting information. We appreciate the time you took.
Would anybody else like to make a comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I was fortunate enough to be at Ellendale Schools Leader in Me program last week, last Friday, and the children, it's really interesting. The program and the philosophy focuses around seven habits, and the first one's be proactive. I have to read them because I might forget. The second one's begin with the end in mind. The third one's put first things first. The fourth one is think win-win. The fifth one is to seek first to be understood, then to be understood. The sixth one is synergize, and the seventh one is sharpen the saw. So, it's amazing that our children are learning this and could be beneficial for all of us, but it was quite a day. The students led the tours and showed us everything that they were doing, and they were very proud of the things that they've accomplished, so I was tickled to be there. And on another note, it was in the paper, but Mr. Roney was elected to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Board of Directors, and that's quite an honor, and certainly proud of him for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion of the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the adoption of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, I'll recognize County Manager Rick French at this time to start the budget work session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I want to talk about, a little bit about, is just do a quick overview of where we are in the current 2016-2017 budget. We'd like to say, and I know we've had a lot of discussion about budget amendments, when we started out the year in July 2016, our, the general fund budget was $38,284,170. The current general fund budget stands at $39,536,875, and just want to point that out as we start. The total amount of actual revenues, according to our May financials, we've collected a little over $33,200, almost $33,300,000, or a little over 84% of our revenue. And I'm going to go over, highlight some of those areas, but if you look at expenses for the, this year, for the same timeframe, we're at 76.1%, which puts us in a good financial position, just like it did last year. Sales taxes in this current fiscal year are, as we get a financial report every month on sales taxes, they're running about where they should. Currently, we're, we've collected in Article 39 sales tax, $1,342,000. Last year, for the same time period, we collected $1,226,000, Article 40 sales taxes. This year, we've collected $1,235,000 compared to last year, $1,185,000, so still a little bit ahead in both of those sales taxes. Of course, the new, what we call the new sales tax, so far this year, we've collected $901,390, and of course, we didn't have that sales tax last year, so that's a, that's a plus for us. So, and then if you look at property taxes, so far this year, we've collected total property taxes all the years, it's $19,431,000 compared to the same time last year, $19,392,000, so just about the same number there. Some things that we always look at, the license plate agency, which is a small way, but just a way to monitor sort of where we are. This year, we've collected $103,000, and we've budgeted $104,000 total in revenue for this year. And last year, for the same timeframe, we collected $94,463. Registered deeds revenue, which is another good indicator, so far this year, we've collected $191,250, which were over our budget, which is $180,000. Last year, we collected $181,932 for the same time period. So, those are running a little better. We always talk about detention charges. Detention charges are running behind, of course, we're aware of that, but they're starting to pick up. Right now, our detention money is at $231,720, compared to last year, we were at $433,125. But we have seen an increase in out-of-county inmates, so that number is picking up. We had budgeted $400,000.
What do you think that will end up at?
I think we can hit 300, but I don't think we can get a whole lot more than that. We've, I don't have, I've got another printout that has the monthly, but I don't have that handy, so. Building inspection revenues, which is something that we also follow very closely, we've, it's started to pick up. We're at $176,583 compared to last year, $187,406, so we're gaining. We were behind significantly, but we've caught back up. We budgeted $205,000 for building inspections revenues. Just want to say, health and DSS revenues are running about normal. If there is a normal, stuff runs behind. It tends to catch up, and if we receive revenue, it'll be after the fiscal year closes, as we try to wrap up the fiscal year. It could be up to September when we collect some of that revenue. Let's see. EMS charges are currently, we're at $1,215,000, $1,215,718. Last year, for the same time period, $1,62,476. We budgeted $1,325,000, so we're certainly going to make that target. That's a good thing. A few other things aren't, they aren't big numbers, but I think it's important. Our animal services, and we've picked up in revenue over the last few years. This year, we're right at a little over 50, like $51,000, and last year, we were at $50,000, it's a little over $50,000, so that's a good indicator as far as getting some revenue in that area. And recreation, we're running a little bit behind. Right now, we're at $59,397, and last year, we were at $74,949. And we'll look at that, but that's running a little bit behind. But all in all, our revenues are running at $33,298,000. Expenses are running at $29,539,000. And remember that our revenue slows down is probably an understatement, really, when we get into, as we sort of wrap up the fiscal year. We still collect sales tax dollars, even after, even after the end of our fiscal year, we'll collect a little bit more, and we are collecting more, more sales tax and new sales tax. So, that gives you a pretty good idea about where things are. I'm not going to go over the expenses, I just thought it just gives you an overall picture of where we are, but we're ahead, where it is, and that's exactly where we want to be. And this is very similar to the pattern that we had last year. And as you recall, we, at the end of the fiscal year, we were in a good financial position. So, the next area, and I guess Josh sort of, Commissioner Lael sort of set the table for us, talking about the requests, and again, the books that you have are just the departmental requests that you have. Request totaled $40,206,664, and I took the five largest requests, and those are the Sheriff's Department, Alexander County Schools, DSS, Detention, and EMS. Sheriff's Department had, request was $517,000 more. Alexander County Schools' request was $509,000 more. DSS was $336,000 more. Detention, $317,000 more, and EMS, $263,000 more. The Sheriff's request, and again, these are requests that you have, sort of the highlight, just highlight a few things that made that number a little bit higher. They requested four new employees and some pay-related increases. They requested $254,000 in capital, and that's basically for cars, which we've been doing every year. $115,000 is set in that to purchase property, property currently, that we are currently leasing for the evidence storage building. The lease will be up this year, and we need to go ahead and plan to purchase that and put that in the budget. There's some smaller items, like projector and screen replacement in the training room at the law enforcement and detention center, which is $12,000, and they budgeted 10 bulletproof vests, which is about seven, a little over $7,800. That was in the, in the budget. There's some smaller items, but those are the bigger things. Currently, the Sheriff's Department has 32 full-time officers and 30 part-time officers. The Alexander County School request, Dr. Hefner will present that later. She did have a family bird season. Okay, she's here. And you'll have, and you also have a copy, but I do want to point out a couple items about the school budget. One, the school budget has increased $1,031,900 since the 2013-2014 fiscal year.
Like, can you say that again?
The school budget has increased $1,031,900 since the 2013-2014 fiscal year, and we're going to show some slides on this in a few minutes. Also, there's been discussion about the $150,000 payment that was made when the auditorium was, that project was started, and the county borrowed $6.2 million on June 30th, 2004, to finance three projects. One of those projects, projects was building an auditorium at the county high school. $4 million of the, of the loan was for the auditorium construction, $4 million. For many years, the county has paid debt service on school capital projects from Article 40 and Article 42 sales tax, that is set aside for school capital. When the auditorium project came along, the Board of Education did not want the full amount of debt service to be paid from the sales tax set-aside money. The Board of Education wanted the county to pay $2 million, or half the amount of the auditorium debt, out of county general fund money, and the reason was just to give them more flexibility in how they use that money. And the county agreed that over a 12-year ti, a 12-year period, they would, they have paid all that money back. So, at the end of this fiscal year, the one we're in now, we will have paid our $2 million, which was our agreement with the school system. DSS, their request, they requested one new position, an income maintenance supervisor, and that position, there's, part of that money is state money and part of that is county money. $39,302 is county funding of the $51,635 salary. There's also some other related salary increases in the DSS budget. They also are requesting two replacement vans, and again, county funding is $30,814, and $46,000 is the total price of the van, so we'd get, we'd have, we'd get some money, state pays some of that. The biggest increase, the department is foster care. There's a 44% increase in foster care, the cost of food and provisions line item for currently 70 children in federal, I'm sorry, in foster care, there were 58 for the last time, for, for last year, so we're, DSS is seeing reduction in reimbursements, so that's the largest area of increase. And also, there was drug screening at $50,000, which 80 to 90% of the children DSS deals with are from families where there is substance abuse, and this is 100% county cost. And again, this is all the stuff that you have in your books. Detention request, $41,777 to purchase 33 handheld radios, and $133, I'm sorry, $130,000 for a mezzanine barrier, and that's something we've talked about several years, but that request is also in this year's budget. There's also some salary changes with the retirement of our jail administrator. Mike Harrison's retiring at the end of this month, and some salary, and some changes on on-call compensation. That's in the request, and you've got that information. EMS, EMS requests four new EMTs, and that will allow us to move, or EMS to move in from the 12-hour truck to a 24-hour truck, something we really need. There's $175,000 for replace a 2009 ambulance that has over 225,000 miles on it, and I'm, that's another, something that we've done every year is replace an ambulance. There's $60,000 requested for three, a three-bay garage, which is, would be located in the rear of EMS Station 1, and a new transport ventilator, which is $15,000. And those are the major items in those five areas where the biggest, largest requests are. There are also some other meaningful requests I'd like to point out to you that are in your book. There's $101,656 to replace the existing county mobile air van. There's $28,500 to replace emergency response vehicle driven by the assistant fire marshal. There's $25,615 to replace an inspections vehicle. There's $125,000 worth of technology request in the, in the budget. $122,400 of that is technology requests from, by department, from DSS to Sheriff's Department. Some of those we get reimbursement for, some of those, most of those we do not. And then there's some, with technology, there are network switches and cameras at the courthouse and some other things. Again, you have all that information in your packet, and again, these are the requests. There's also something that's become a sore spot, is some of the paving, is some of the parking lots, and we have in the budget to pave the Bethlehem Library parking lot, the Health Department parking lot, and the administration parking lot. We've patched and done a number of different things. They're all well beyond their years, and this will, we have money in the budget to, it's requested to pay, to do those things. There's also $16,000 in the budget for a vehicle lift, and it's really set up for ambulance and is at our new garage, our new leased building garage that we have. There are 21 positions requested in the budget. There is one at Rocky Face Park, there is one at the tag office, four EMTs, one health promotion planner requested, one at the senior center, four 911 telecommunicators, four deputies in the Sheriff's Department, the one income maintenance supervisor in DSS, a public information director, a purchasing agent, and a coworker, a worker, and a county attorney, a full-time county attorney. And at this time, I would like for Chad, would you show the first slide? Okay, if you've got this on your screen.
Yeah.
Can everybody see this?
Yeah.
What we wanted to do was look at actual expenses for 2015, 2016, 2017, and then what was requested in 2018, and, and it's divided as the audit divides them, general government, public safety, human services, and so on. If there's something you have a question about, again, those numbers will be impacted by insurance, or added employees, or capital, or those kinds of things. So, those numbers may look a little larger, but the, the same departments are usually the same ones, it's usually the same type of request, as you can follow. If you look at, under general government, you see the departments there, and I'm, sorry, I haven't even got my glasses, I can't see all those numbers, but that's the total general government, which is governing body, administration, I think it's planning, was it was combined with inspections, board of elections, finance, purchasing, tax, license plate, information technology, registered deeds, maintenance, garage, court facility, and human resources. Public safety, and you have all those, sheriff, detention, and so on. Human services, if you could, are there any questions about that slide? That's a lot of information, and again, that shows, the far right-hand column is the requested, request, and the other, the 15 and 16 are the actual expense, and the third column is the revised budget of where we are now.
Mr. French, just a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
I've done quite a bit of highlighting on this, because that's just sort of. You mentioned the license plate agency, which is line item 4550.
Yes, sir.
What were the, what were the revenues?
Revenues are about 100, and they're about 100,000, and a little over 100,000. Expenses are around 140, that's what it normally runs. It's about a, I'll say, if you won't say a loss, it's about a $40,000, $35,000 loss.
Which I know we've discussed before.
Right, right.
But then they, this, I mean, this is the question. Their request, or whomever's, was $30,000 more than current year, which current year, we're looking at about a $40,000 loss, which I've made my opinion known that I don't think we should operate a tag office, period, because it's, I mean, you know, if private industry couldn't make it work, the, the public government sure doesn't need to try. But what create, I mean, what created the...
That increases is for a full-time position.
An additional employee.
It's, it's taking a part-time position and making them full-time. When they eventually move to the new building downtown, the idea is set them up as like a separate department, let them have the, a department head, that person, and what that does is gives them a person to sort of coordinate that. The, the tag office has never made money, and we went into that setup knowing it would lose some money, and I will say, lose is probably $30,000 range. It operates without much loss.
But, I mean, but...
The feeling was at the time, by the...
But, I'll say, but with the 2018 requested, we're talking $70,000 loss, and then we're going to move them into a new building and take up space in a new building and make it, and have them be their own department and department head. I don't mean this, but the revenues aren't going to increase.
Right.
Because tag renewals can be done online, and, you know, they can be done in Hickory, Statesville, Conover, Wilkes-Barre, Lenore. I mean, you know, and I, and I feel sure that it's, I mean, it's convenient for some people in Taylorsville. I, I mean, I've been to the tag office in Taylorsville a couple times in the past year, but...
And Commissioner, this is just, again, this is their request. This is not...
Yeah, I know, and I'm just...
In the budget that you'll see from me next week, this may not be in there, so...
And like I say, I'm just voicing my concerns, what, what was presented, you know? I mean, this is what was presented, and whether it came from, whether it came from a department head, or it came from whomever, you know, I'm, I don't understand.
Okay.
And I guess we're, I guess...
When you got, when you got a ship that's sinking, why do you, why do you cut, cut the hole in the, in the hole bigger?
Right.
But that's just my opinion.
Got you.
Then, another question, 5,400, human resources. From 2015 to 2018, we, we've looked at a 93% increase.
Almost all that increase is retiree insurance.
Okay. Because, I mean, and I know, you know...
That's, I mean, that's it.
Right.
It's not new employees, it's just retiree insurance. That's where we put it.
Which we have discussed, we have discussed handling in a different manner.
We have. We're going to save some money on that. That number, I don't know if that's the adjusted number or not, but that number would be less than what originally started.
Okay.
And that's not, I just want to point out, if anybody sees that, that's not retiree insurance just for that department, that's retiree insurance for the board.
Yes, that's right.
Right.
You ready to go to the next slide, or?
Yeah, it'd be nice.
I've got, I've got several other...
Who you are.
You'll have link?
Yeah, no, I mean, I just...
Okay. The next slide, is that the second? Okay, there's number two. It's broken up in, again, like the audit, culture, recreation, environmental protection, economic and physical development, debt service, education, and total general fund. There's that number that talks about the total on the far right-hand side in the corner. Our debt service is, is going, as you can see, it's going in the right direction. It's, in 2015, it was over $2 million, and it'll be under 1.8 million in the upcoming budget. See that?
Yep.
Everybody follow that? Again, I don't know if there's anything out there that jumps out at you, if you had anything you want to ask questions about.
I have another question. I understand Rocky Face Park from 2015 to 2018, that there, there have been changes made out there.
Yes.
That there's, you know, but, and I know, you know, there's a request for an additional employee.
There is.
I mean, I know, I'm aware of that too, but I just have a hard time stomaching that we're up 113% in three years. And we're going to be $222,000 a year, you know, and you... You know, and you say, well, we had this many visitors, and I know it's a significant number, don't get me wrong. And I'm not saying it's, it's a bad thing, but, and I know Rocky Face Park's special, and I know it's different. But do we spend $5 a head on the other county parks for each person that goes to them per Because, you know, I'm just, real quick math, if we have 40,000 visitors at Rocky Face Park in a year, that works out to about five bucks a head, just in administrative cost, not counting the, however many million we've spent plus more that we're getting ready to spend, that I did not vote for.
Well, in.
You know, and I, I mean, and I'm, and I'm not trying to be smart, but, you know, how many thousand kids go, how many thousand people go to East Alexander Park? And do we spend $5 a head on those per year?
I'm sure we don't.
I'm sure, I'm sure we don't either. I mean, you know, do we do that at Bethlehem Park? Do we do that at, you know, and I know Rocky Face Park is a different, different thing, but I just think, I think it's a lot of money for, for what there is, for, you know, for what, I think there's a lot of money spent there that I don't know 100% of the population would necessarily agree with. Then one other thing, I want, I wanted to make note on this, the library, combined the County Library with the Bethlehem Branch Library in 2017, it shows a 20% increase. And actually, if you do the math and you add Bethlehem and the County Library together, they have a decrease of 2.2%, not an increase of 20%.
Right.
So I just thought that information was misleading, because obviously, the library's running a pretty tight ship.
Yeah, that's why we just gave you the requested amount.
Right, I know, I understand, but what I'm saying is the information is misleading.
Yeah.
Because it says very clearly, item 6300, that library was an increase of 20%. Well, when you add, you know, line item 6300 and 6301, they total 503,612, which is fiscal year 2017. Their requested for 18 is 492,560, which is a decrease of 2.2%. All I'm saying is, the information is not correct.
On that one, sir.
Or it's misleading, I'm sorry.
What was the 20% increase for the main library from the previous year?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, I get that. Right, I get that, I mean, I understand that completely.
If I understand that somewhat, there's a, some type of grant that has been running that is now included in that budget, is, is like $90,000. I presume that was the wash there, I didn't know.
No, I don't think it's.
No, I mean, they've always had the, about the same amount from the state. It's just the, and we haven't combined it in fiscal year 17. Everything will be run the same, it's just we didn't need to break it out on the budget separately. When we first created the Bethlehem Branch Library, we set up a separate budget code just so we could keep track of what it costs to get that up and running. But now that it's been up and running for a while, there's no need to have them separated out for the budget purposes. But, but I agree, I mean, it does look like something has happened there that's a little different. But it's, it's basically the budget for the library as a whole, Bethlehem and the main is staying about the same.
And it's also adding a few hours at Stony Point.
I mean, like I said, and it's $11,000 less than it was 17, so, which is, which is a positive, I mean, that's a good thing.
They're doing a good job.
Yeah.
You know, or.
Ready for the next slide?
I don't mean to be hard, I do.
No, you're not.
Actually, I'm doing over most of this stuff about 2:30 in the morning, so I can't guarantee it's all, that my thoughts are all correct.
The third page. Okay, that's just the landfill, gives you an idea of the landfill budget, and again, that's sort of all in line. We haven't had any increases, significant increases in the landfill budget for some time, and that's evidenced by that, the way it's set up.
Okay, the next slide, Chad.
Okay, this is something that had, you guys have asked about, and what, one of the things this is, is the new sales taxes and the amount that we give to the schools. We receive 112,672 dollars every month. 33,333.34 go to the school. Those funds are not restricted like our other sales tax money, the school can do with that as they will. And, and last year, we appropriated $400,000 of that new sales tax to the schools, and you'll see that at, at sort of the bottom of the second column. And actually, we will receive, we budgeted a million dollars, we really weren't certain about it, but that number's actually higher than that, it'd be about a million three. You see that number on the left-hand side, everybody follow that? From the new sales tax, again, the 400,000 are additional funds to the school, which is what we give to the school system to cover the 2016 funding amount. We budgeted, and we've already, this is 290, is that 295,000? This is for like our local match for industrial park pump station project, and then 400,000, 400,000 in 18 is just a continuation of that for the school. As we look down the road, we see the, in, as we look ahead, Debt Service for the State Revolving Loan Fund, Sewer Project, if the loan's approved, and possibly Broadband, if we get into some use, we could use that money for that. That money can be used for economic development, education, and community college, and it can be used 100% for one area, 50, however you want to do it. But we started out basically going with, at it with our Board of Education receiving 400,000 or roughly a third of that money, so that's a good start. That's one thing that, that there's been some question about. If you go to the next slide, Chad. This is the.
Article 40 and Article 42 Sales Tax, restricted for school capital and debt service.
Okay, this is something that I think one of you, one or two of you had asked about. If you go back and look, you see the breakdown and how the funds are, the, on the top of the page, there's a number, 2.5 million dollars, that's the beginning balance, July of 2014. And then you see the different categories, and it was, with an ending balance, that year, 175,776 dollars were spent for the property at Sugarloaf Fire Department. And then we've done 14, 15, 15, 16, and 16, 17, all those years, as you had asked.
So it went up from 2.5 to a little, you know, 3,65,000 in 215.
Includes the money that rolled over, because it keeps.
From previous year.
That's right, yes, sir.
What is that balance now? So it's 3,65,000 dollars in 215?
On the next slide.
Okay, all right.
About two more.
Two more, yeah.
Two more pages.
So if you'll go to, is that the next slide?
No.
Next slide, Chad, I'm sorry, I can't see it.
There we go.
Okay, there is the School Sales Tax Fund activity for 2015, 2016, beginning July 1st, 2015, 3,65,000 dollars and some, and then you see the breakdown as we just discussed. And you see the subtractions from the School Sales Tax Funds that were spent in June 2016. There was money for fencing, fencing at high school, the ALP building, which was 480,000 dollars, computer equipment, Ellendale Elementary, heating, air, HVAC, Ellendale phone system, West Middle and Sugarloaf Elementary Project, and those are, that totaled 700, we spent 727,000 dollars and some change out of that in last fiscal year.
The ALP, is that the Alternative Learning?
It is, uh-huh, it is.
Program?
Yes. So again, just to show, just to show you what those numbers are, okay, Chad? And then here is 16, 17, again, beginning at 3,155,000, with the same kind of breakdown. The subtractions from the School Sales Tax Fund in August 2016, 149,000, almost 150,000 dollars for the ALP building, 176,000 computer release buyout, April 2017, the ALP Student Success Center, ALP building, 245,000, baseball field house repairs, 14,670, Bethlehem Elementary School phone system, 15,000, and East Alexander Middle School phone system, 26,000, almost 27,000 dollars. So we'll continue to provide that and give you sort of a breakdown of those costs as you'd asked for, or so, just to have that.
Now, that, that money that comes in, that is part of, and people don't realize, sales tax that you pay is broken in all these little itty-bitty parts that go here and there.
Right.
So that, that money's generated from sales tax, and it comes to Alexandria County.
We have the money, the school requested, we give them a report, Jennifer provides a report to their Finance Department and Dr. Hefner, and then as they need money, they request it, and there's a process we go through.
That's completely in control of the school system, and we have no control over that at all.
We don't spend, right, right, that's correct.
And I know that, I was pointing that out.
But we do, the investment account is in a position.
Right, right.
But by state statute, we, we can't control, I mean, we, we, we don't have control over what that money is spent on.
Well, we spend part of it on the debt service for the school.
Right.
That is a choice.
Toward, and we want to control it.
Yeah, right. One, one question, and, and Ms. French, this may be, and this may be more for Dr. Hefner, I don't know, but, I mean, based on this information, the June 2016 subtraction or, you know, money usage.
Yes.
August 2016, and then April 2016, between the three, the, so the Alternative Learning Program building ended up costing 876,103.27.
I guess, I don't know what that number is. She could answer, Dr. Hefner could answer that when she gets.
It's just what they've taken out of that fund.
Right.
To pay for that, that doesn't mean that's what it was.
And that's the building on the south side of the football stadium.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Is there one more slide? This shows, slide shows something we talked about, and Jennifer went back, I'll say to the beginning of the time, but it's not really. But if you look, track the current expenses, and especially if you look at what I mentioned earlier about the amount of the increase with the school system, and you can track the auditorium payments, you can see that, that one column where it totals to 2 million, that's paid off in, in 16, 17. And again, the, from 13, 14, a million, 31,900 dollars is the increase for the schools. There were two years back about 2009, 10, somewhere in that, if you can see that, those 175,000 and 50,000, I think it is, one was for the county outside, their money just basically paid to have the heating, the, at Old Wittenburg, we thought since we were using the building, we would, there was a problem with it, and the county paid that. And also, we paid 50,000 toward the resurfacing of the track. That was just sort of a one-time thing, but I just wanted to point that out since it doesn't fit, but that was done back several years ago. Have you got, is there, are there any other questions? But I just want you to be able to see that, and I'll provide you all copies, copies of this as we will, anyone that wants them, so. I have some additional things, but I think it, this time, I think that's all the slides that I have. And again, these are the requests. Oh, there's, I want to talk to you about tap fees just a minute. There's, there's several other things we want to talk about when we get to the last item, project updates and related issues, but one thing I want to mention, there, first of all, just point out, there's no proposed increases, of course, in the tax rate, landfill fees, or the fire, any of the fire, volunteer fire departments. We're asking for the water tap fees to stay the same, which is the inside Sea of Hickory rates for the 17, 18 fiscal year.
Wait, back up, what now?
We are asking for the water taps to stay at the inside rate for the 17, 18 fiscal year. We want to, we want to get that started so we can go ahead and let people know that.
And normally, those tap rates are double what they are.
Right, that's.
At the inside rates.
That's right. And that's what we were going to go to, but we, if, by delaying this, this will leave those rates the same. Hickory is proposing a 1.7% increase in their water rate increase, but this hadn't been improved by their council yet, so a number of times, we've put a number in and it gets reduced. So at this point, we're just letting you know, letting you know that, yes, sir.
So the rates that we've discussed, that they errantly charged some people in January, that we said was it going to be charged till July, will now not be charged till next July?
And we started charging inside City of Hickory tap fees, and there was some discussion, we had talked at one point about leaving those intact for another year to help us encourage more people to tap onto the water system. And so that's what I'm saying, is that for the 17, 18 fiscal year, they would stay at the inside rates, which is just a little over $1,000, which is expensive. But as Commissioner Mayberry pointed out, they double fees or double that, so they won't go to that. So, but for, for the next fiscal year, for the next year, they'll be.
The next fiscal year, starting in July?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what they currently, they're currently the same right now, but we want to be able to let people know that the, the inside.
Which is what we said.
Is what you said, and what we want to keep, that'll encourage more people to tap on, so.
It's, you know, it, it would be, I'm trying to think what those are right now, if they're right at 1,100 dollars, the inside tap fee.
I would say it's 1121.
1121, so be 11, I mean, you know.
Be 22, 42.
42, 42.
22, 42.
So 2,242 dollars is what the normal tap fee would be. Right now, they're 1,100 dollars, so if you want to hook up, then.
And I, I have, I have done some.
And that's for a three-quarter inch tap.
That's not for two-inch or any of the other.
And one thing, one thing that I think we, and I will say this, I think we, I don't want to say we've been spoilt, we've been spoiled, or as we say in Alexandria County, But basically, we have been paying tap rates like we are inside the city limits of Hickory, which mean, you know, well, for us to actually get those tap rates like we're inside the city limits of Hickory, we would need to be paying Hickory City taxes, which we do not.
Right, that's correct.
So we've really been, you know, and I'm not defending the City of Hickory, they, you know, not to, not to beat them down either, but, you know, we've been getting a pretty fair, I mean, we've been getting a very fair deal on tap, tap fees, if, in my, you know, in my opinion. Am I, you know, am I excited about them doubling? No, because I think that'll discourage people from, like I say, from, from, you know, from tapping on, as well as, that's just additional expense for any residential, commercial, you know, construction, expansion, whatever. But we, you know, we, we, we're getting a good deal, and if we can get them to extend them through 18, I mean, if you ask me, that's a victory.
We're, we're only about 5% of the City Hickory water customer base.
About 5,000 customers in Alexandria, total in Alexandria County. I think Hickory has over 25,000 water customers total. I'm not sure exactly what the number is, Jennifer and I were talking about that today.
That's just tap fees, what about the rates?
That's, no, that's just all about number of customers.
No, but I mean.
As far as rates.
The rates be the same as they are right now.
The rates change, the, the rates, we, Alexandria County moved to.
Double rates.
Out of city, out of the city rates, January 1st of 2017.
Right, and they'll continue.
That's where some of. That's where some of the confusion, even at the billing department, at the City of Hickory, where people have gone to buy water taps and so on, there's been confusion there, as well as, but, yeah, we are currently paying out-of-city rates. But are getting taps currently at inside rates.
It's all monopoly, I've got a subdivision out that's outside city limits, but still on City of Hickory water. And, yeah, I get hammered out there, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And you have no, it's a monopoly.
What choice do you, I mean, what choice do we have?
You gotta have.
They have water and they have a sewer plant.
But remember that we have to generate revenue in our water department, also to pay for debt service and for other costs that we have.
And to run more water lines, so.
Well, I have some other things under the project updates and related issues, but I guess at this time, it's Dr. Hefner's here, the Alexandria County Schools Budget Request.
Thank you, Mr. French, thank you Chairman Campbell. I've just blown in from the urgent care in Mountain View, so if I'm a little frazzled, I probably really am. But I do appreciate your flexibility in working with me this evening. I hope that you received the copy of the presentation, the things that I wanted to talk about tonight. The first being in the request, excuse me, in the request for the seventeen eighteen school year. Those really are coming from two categories, current expenses and capital outlay. And I haven't made it a secret, declining enrollment is the biggest funding obstacle that we continue to experience in the school system. You can see on my third slide that the state funds us at five thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars per student.
I think that we're up and running, I don't think he can load the slide since he just got it a few minutes ago. Is that correct, Chad?
That's correct, he cannot.
He cannot load it, so.
Do you have a copy of any of what I'm talking about?
They just have this, they have your.
We have this, is what we were sent last week, so.
Okay. Is there any, is there any way that we could make copies?
Is there anything else we can cover until?
Yeah, is there anything else we can cover until then for making copies?
I've got some other things, but you just won't, because it ties into the closed session.
Okay, we'll just wait.
It will take a bit of minutes.
We'll just relax for a few minutes.
Would you like a risque?
Yeah, we have little balls candy, if anybody would like one.
I'd love one, Dr. Peel, but I don't need one, thanks.
It's like intermission at a ballgame.
Need concessions.
Rick, do we have a fast copier here?
Sir.
Do we have a very fast copier here?
We do, yes, sir.
Okay.
It will take a minute.
We have to have the media let us in. Media had to let me in earlier, too.
Mike, you didn't know you had two rolls here, did you? She's quick.
Hey, it's all about budget, Micah, you know?
We'll get your bill later, won't we? Hot off the press.
Literally. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Now we can follow you.
Take two, I hope this makes more sense as I talk. As I said, this year's budget request was submitted in two categories, current expenses and capital outlay. Declining enrollment continues to be our biggest funding obstacle. The state funds each pupil at five thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars per pupil. The current enrollment as of May twelfth, two thousand seventeen, in grades K through twelve, four thousand eight hundred fifty-eight students, and in our pre-K program, one hundred thirty-six students. And I need to say here that the school system, the pre-K funding doesn't come to the school system. It goes to the Head Start funding and NC pre-K. So when we count in numbers, we like to show those children are certainly in our pre-K numbers, but we don't get that five thousand eight hundred thirty-three per child for those children.
But they don't count in your total numbers, like when you submit your ADM or whatever?
No, they don't. I just give you that for your information, to know what we're working with in that program. You can see we have included this information for a couple of years. In fifteen sixteen, we lost one hundred thirty-five children. And when you multiply that times five thousand eight hundred thirty-three, you have seven hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars as far as a reduction in funding. For the sixteen seventeen school year, we lost seventy-four children, and you can see what that calculates to. For the seventeen eighteen school year, based on projections, we will lose another sixty children. Multiply that times five thousand eight hundred thirty-three, and you can see we're looking at right at three hundred fifty thousand dollars as far as loss in state funding. Chairman Campbell and I talked a little bit about projections versus actual numbers, and how this actually works with school system funding. DPI will decrease our state allotment if the actual daily, average daily membership for the first school month is less than the projected ADM by one hundred children. Now, if you're in a system that's growing, it works the opposite way also. If you end up with a hundred more than they projected, then you get additional funding. But for us, enrollment declines. So based on their projections, if you are lower by one hundred children, you do have to revert money back to the state. And the reductions are made in the following areas. Classroom teacher funding, instructional support, non-instructional support, teacher assistant funding, classroom materials and supplies, textbooks, and career and technical education. Yes, Dr. Peel?
So I can follow in my brain. The K-12 number that you had, the four-eight, five-eight, is that the projected enrollment from DPI?
That's an actual number.
It's an actual.
That was the actual number as of May twelfth.
So let me get this straight, if you, if you only see a ninety-nine pupil reduction, then there's no, you get the same amount of funding.
That's correct.
So you're getting, you're saying there's sixty less, but you're saying that you're going to lose, there's that number, you're going to lose three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state, but if there's sixty less, but that's based on hundred, hundred student brackets, correct? So you're not going to lose any of that?
No, what I'm trying to, this is what I want to explain. DPI is projecting for the seventeen eighteen school year for Alexandria County to have four thousand nine hundred thirty-two children. Look at the number that we had on May twelfth. Four thousand eight hundred fifty-eight. We are already seventy-four children under what they are going to fund us at. So not only, see, that projected number is declining each year. So that money comes off the top, that almost three hundred fifty thousand dollars in funding. Then when you look at what they're projecting us to have, and what we had as of May twelfth, we're already seventy-four under. So we've been looking at the numbers of children that we screened for kindergarten versus the number that we know are, will be graduating on June ninth. And the last time I looked at the number, we're actually about six children. Now, granted, we will have some kinders show up that we didn't screen in our kindergarten screenings. But the last time I looked at those numbers, putting in kinders, taking out seniors, we were six students within that one hundred number.
So if that, well, I was going to say, so if that number, your, your actual, right now, today, is four thousand eight hundred fifty-eight, if it doesn't go below four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two, you don't lose any money, right?
I guess thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Four thousand eight hundred thirty-three, correct.
So that's kind of fluid, that's not a known, that's kind of a variable.
Yeah.
And that's something that we work like crazy, those first twenty days of school, because it's based on the twentieth day, your actual number on day twenty. We're working like crazy to locate kids, you know, are they on vacation, did they indeed move? During that time period, we're trying to track children down, because we want as many as possible on the twentieth day, because we don't want to be one hundred or more under that projected number. Because if we are, then we have to revert back the funding for one-half of the number of students that were overestimated. So if they overestimate us by a hundred, and they fund us on an extra hundred, we have to revert back the funding for fifty of those children. Dr. Peel?
Perhaps not a fair question, but I think it's relevant to that number. Any indication on the potential of the new private school? Have those kids registered for kindergarten, or are they registering elsewhere?
Dr. Peel, I don't know all the details of the new school that they plan to open, but I have heard that this next year will be a planning year. And so I haven't heard that that program will open in August.
Most likely, then, you're getting all those kinders now, then.
So for your pre-K screening for this upcoming year, are those numbers similar to what they have been in previous years?
They're close, yes. They are close. Do you have any other questions? That's very hard to understand. It's hard to explain why those first twenty days of the school year, we track down children, we want as many as possible, because on day twenty, that's where, you know, it's determined if we have to revert money back to the state or not. Then moving on to the next slide, we don't have all of our allotments. As of this morning, we don't have any of our federal allotments. As far as, as, you know, information to work on and trying to work on a budget, it's difficult when you don't have those numbers. But the things that we do know, in classrooms, state classroom teaching positions, that code you can see is oh-oh-one, we have been reduced by five positions, and that's based on loss of enrollment. We are now at two hundred twenty-three state-paid teaching positions for the seventeen eighteen year. In vocational education, we have had a reduction of three months of employment, and that's how that funding source works in the CTE program. In the disadvantaged student supplemental funding, we know that we are losing just over five thousand dollars. In the limited English proficiency funding area, we know that we're losing just right around twelve thousand dollars. In the at-risk funding, a loss of almost seventeen thousand dollars. And other, you know, other losses are to come, because of, like I said, the declining enrollment plays a part in all of those funding pots. Questions there?
In regards to the classroom teachers, you got a reduction of five. Is the early college separate from this, because?
It's all in our school system. Those student numbers count for the system.
Teacher numbers count for the system as well, correct?
Correct. I'm going to get to a part where I'll talk about fund balance, because in all honesty, oh, I'm sorry, just. In all honesty, I've put in the number for the fund balance based on what we are using for this current school year to balance our budget. The reality is with the Senate budget that was released last week, if that is the budget that's adopted, that number increases a great deal, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But I did want to just mention that, and the reason being is because of the loss of flexibility of moving teachers to different pots of money, so that the state picks up those higher salaries, and we pay lower-paid teachers out of some of our other pots, such as low wealth. But I'll talk about that in just a minute. Yes, Commissioner Lale?
This is, I mean, this may sound bad, and I don't mean it to, because I have four children in Alexandria County Public Schools. One in high school, one in middle school, and two in elementary school, okay? But, I mean, I see declining enrollment, and I don't see it as a short-term trend. And that's, I mean, that's just, I think that's how it is. I'm in the real estate business. You know, I see information about who's moving here, who's moving away. As county commissioners, we've gotten information from West Pima Council of Government that says, hey, basically, every single person that gets an education and decides to get married moves away now. And the people that are moving here are fifty-five and over. Well, they don't feed the school system. And, you know, and I'm not saying that the reductions that the state, you know, says this is how, you know, you've got this many, you know, you need to reduce by this many, and this many, and this many, and this many. But at some point, you do have to say, hey, you know, we're serving less, you know, we're serving less children, so we've gotta make reductions, you know, in staff. We've got, I mean, there's no choice.
Well, we talked about one choice this entire past year, and that was to capture some operational cost. And that was through the discussion of possibly closing a school. And we crunched some numbers, and that was five hundred forty thousand dollars roughly, and those were estimates. And the board has decided to not go that route. So that was an option that we talked about, because the next option, Commissioner Lale, you're exactly right, will be in people.
And, and like I say, I don't mean to be, I don't, I don't wanna sound harsh, I don't wanna, but public education is a business. The product you're putting out is educated children. The money, you know, like any other business, you have, you have resources you put into it to create a product. And, well, you know, yes, it's a, it's a public entity, and it's tax money, you know, tax money and is what pays the, you know, is pays for that product. But you still, no business, you know, okay, if I, if I have a manufacturing company, and we make widgets, and I under, you know, and I'm selling seven million widgets a year, well, guess what? This year, I'm, I only sold six million. Next year, I'm expected to only sell five and a half. The next year, I'm only gonna sell five. And there, you know, and we see, and I see all this coming. As the owner of the widget manufacturing company, I can't say, hey, I know, I know, you know, I don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings, but I can't continue to produce, I can't pretend to, you know, continue to produce at, you know, and spend the money like I'm making, like I'm selling seven million widgets, and I'm only selling four million, if that makes sense.
And we haven't sent anyone home, but I can tell you that-
And I, and I hate, you know, and I know when I was on Board Education, one thing we tried really hard was, was to allow attrition, you know, which, if anybody doesn't understand that term, that's allowing people to retire and-
Or resign.
Or resign and create, right.
Or resign, just nat, you know, just nat, you know, the natural, not having to fire anybody or lay anybody off.
But, um, I mean, and I, you know, and I just-
We're continuing to do that. At one point, I made a presentation to the board, and it was early on in my superintendency. We had cut over a hundred, one hundred positions throughout the system over, was it a six-year period? Something of that nature. I don't remember exactly how many years. We continue to do that with retirements and resignations.
Well, and I, and I don't necessarily mean my comments directed towards you, but it's just like, the public, nobody wants their school closed. But, oh, you know, if you ask them, okay, well, are you willing to, are you willing to pay the bill then? Are you willing to pay the bill to keep it open? And they're gonna say, well, no, no, no. You know, and it's public education. And if something happens, and it requires that district lines be redrawn, and my kids end up going to a different school, my kids are, my elementary school kids are at Bethlehem Elementary. Well, guess what? If they get moved to Ellendale, or Wittenburg, or whichever, so be it. It's public education. It's not Josh Lale education. It's not, you know, and I don't mean to step on any toes in the public or anywhere else, but, you know, the citizens of one particular community or another don't, you know, they don't, it's not, you know, it's not up to them to decide how things go. It's, it's Alexander County's, it's, you know, there's federal money, state money, and local money. Well, I hate to tell you, the local money, we have a little control of locally. The state money, we have to do what Raleigh says. The federal money, we have to do what Washington DC says. And if that means, you know, hey, Alexander County should really only have four elementary schools, and two middle schools and one high school, then that's, you know, and I just, I'm afraid that we're gonna kick the can down the road, and kick the can, kick the can, kick the can, and then we're gonna, and then one of these days, it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be a mess. And we're gonna, you know, it's like we don't wanna, we don't wanna accept the reality of what is actually out there. And like I say, I say this as the parent of four kids in the school system. And if, you know, and if we had whomever that does it redraw districts, you know, if my kids got moved to a different school, oh, you know, you know what? I don't think, you know, I don't pay fifty-eight hundred and whatever dollars per child per year for them to go to one school or another. Yes, I pay federal income tax, I pay state income tax, I pay local property tax, I pay sales tax, you know. But, you know, we're just gonna have to, at some point, I think the public and everybody else is just gonna have to say, it's no fun, but this is, this is what's gonna happen. You know, and I'd just hate to see it roll on down the road a couple more years where we have a, you know, two, next year, oh, gosh, we've got, we've got two hundred and ninety-two graduating, and we've got two hundred kinders coming in. And then the next year, it's, oh, we've got two eighty-three graduating, and we've got a hundred and ninety-eight kinders coming in. And before you know it, our school system's thirty-eight hundred kids. Where when I was on, when I was elected to the Board of Education, there were, I look back, there were, I wanna say, when I was elected, there were fifty-nine. I'll say it's been as high as sixty-five hundred, but when I was elected, I think it was fifty-nine, seventy, or something like that. So we're over a thousand kids, you know, we're down over a thousand kids since-
A small school system.
We're a very small school system. I mean, we're, you know, and I'm not, I think we're a good school system, because if I didn't think that, my children wouldn't be in, you know, wouldn't be there. You know, so I'm not, you know, like I say, I'm not trying to bash anything, I just, I think more than anything, everybody's gotta realize that the way it is is the way it is, and sometimes you gotta put on your big boy pants or your big girl pants, and just suck it up and realize it, and deal with it.
Well, we're fortunate. Folks like Sharon Mahaffey worked in the day when they could actually capture money with teaching positions and cash-in teaching positions. They worked to, to build that fund balance up, so that's what we're using to balance our annual budget. And, you know, we've had discussions as far as when we meet the threshold, and take it as low as it can go, what next? And I don't know the answer to that. So.
Proceed.
Pardon me?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
Oh, it's okay. I'm sorry.
Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you. Something that was in the request under the current expenses was the additional personnel needs that we see in the school system. We see that we need an additional social worker, an additional ESL teacher or LEP. We use those interchangeably. And we need an additional school nurse. And I provided some data for you as far as just to say, oh, we need those things. I wanted you to see some of the data. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the term 504, but it's a plan that is granted to children based on educational needs. It's not being placed in the exceptional children's program, but it does allow for some accommodations in their instruction and in their testing if needed. You can see that as of last week, we had in the, the entire school system, one hundred eighty-six children had qualified, and, and the team had deemed it appropriate that they have a 504. Out of those one hundred eighty-six children who have been granted a 504, one hundred forty-three of those children have documented mental health disorders.
What does that encompass?
Anxiety, depression, substance abuse, a variety of, of mental health.
ADHD, that sort of thing, or is that?
Not so much. More serious things typically than ADHD. But some children do have a 504 because they have that diagnosis. But when we're saying mental health, it's more serious than, than that. So if somebody says, you know, Jennifer, why do you need another social worker? Well, those one hundred forty-three children have a diagnosis with a mental health disorder. You know, talking about some of the other ones, schizophrenia, you know, it runs the gamut. But also their families, a lot of times, are struggling with some drug and alcohol addictions and different things. This year, we added four additional social workers to the system. We operated for a long, long time with one social worker, and that social worker worked at our high school. Folks, we're seeing these diagnoses in our pre-K children at a very, very high rate. And so this past year, we added four social workers. We were able to pay for those social workers using Title I funding. Again, I'll talk about that loss of flexibility and some of that in the Senate budget. But we see that with these numbers climbing, and they are climbing quickly, that we need an additional social worker for the system. Dr. Peel, I saw that you had your hand raised.
Yeah, uh, how many is at our college now?
Fifty-seven.
So we got like twenty percent of those children have 504s? Was that diagnosed here, or come with them, or?
No, typically, that, a lot of that happens prior to high school. But I can't say. I don't know. I don't serve on that committee here, the student support team here. I can't say how many of those have been granted this year, but a lot of times, that's happened prior to entering high school.
No, it just shocked me because it was so high.
Now, 504 is not necessarily an IEP.
It's not an IEP.
Which is, an IEP is an individualized education plan.
Correct.
Or-
But a 504 allows a lot of those accommodations that you would find in an IEP, such as testing in a small setting, or testing one-on-one with a teacher, those kinds of things. And then sometimes, some children are 504 eligible based on, let's say, a mental health diagnosis, but they're doing okay in the classroom. They aren't having any kind of academic issues, so they don't have any accommodations. Other questions about the 504s and, and the mental health disorders? Other data worth mentioning. Currently, we have seven hundred forty-four children in the exceptional children's program. And Commissioner Lale asked about an IEP. These seven hundred forty-four children do have a documented IEP. And if you will see the breakdown, six hundred eighty-one of those are in grades K through twelve throughout the system, and sixty-three of those are in our preschool program. So if you see what's coming to us with the younger children, go back to the first slide and see how many we have in preschool. A hundred thirty-six, out of a hundred thirty-six, sixty-three already have an IEP. But I want to mention, and this is just worth mentioning to understand again, school system funding. Regardless of how many children we have identified and have given an IEP, the school system is, exceptional children's funding is capped for the system at twelve point five percent. You will not get any more than funded at twelve point five percent of your population. If you look at that number, that's fourteen point eight percent of our students have been identified EC. And you can't just say, oh, well, they capped it at twelve point five percent funding, those additional two point five percent of the children won't have any services. That's illegal. You can't do that. So we're providing a lot more services in the exceptional children's department than we are funded for.
How is that looked at over certain periods or trends? Because, I mean, how'd they come up to twelve and a half percent?
That I don't know. It's been twelve and a half percent as long as I can remember. Sharon, do you ever-
It looked like if you're facing these type of-
Some school system was sneaky, and they listed about fifty percent of their kids as special needs to get a lot of extra funding at one point, I would imagine, and so they had to-
Had to cap it.
And somebody in Raleigh said, hey, we need to cap this because somebody's taking advantage.
The cap and the percentage has been about like that for ten years.
It's the only number I really remember, to be quite honest.
Does AI, does AIG fall into?
It does not.
Exceptional children?
It does not. And exceptional children, that funding per child in the EC program is four thousand and some dollars. The AIG funding per child is only one thousand. The funding is very different, but no, AIG is not calculated in EC numbers.
So there's a, an extra four thousand and some odd dollars that goes along with the five thousand, the average daily membership.
Correct. And that's, the purpose of that is to pay for the additional personnel needed, and, and such as occupational therapists, physical therapists, EC teachers, EC teacher assistants, things like that. The extra support that an EC child would need. Yes, Dr. Peel?
Well, that seven hundred and forty or fifty has been pretty constant, even with the enrollment going down. That number's always been around that thirteen to fifteen percent, somewhere right in there. But are you seeing that you have more intense needs?
Yes.
That are more costly?
Yes.
And you can get a little bit of rate on that for some of those high-need kids, but for the most part, it's costing you more and more and more to serve these kids with feeding tubes and lots of different things. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Something else that I have to share, Dr. Peel, and you understand this, being in the school business. If you can't fill a position such as for an occupational therapist, you're required by law to have it if a child has that need documented on his or her IEP. We've been advertising for an occupational therapist and can't find anybody. Won't even fill out applications to come to work for us because the salary on the state schedule is not what they can get out in different agencies. So we've had to contract for a position this year that has cost the system ninety thousand dollars. But we didn't have the option to say, nobody applied for the job. We couldn't hire anybody, so, oh, I'm sorry, your children don't get any OT services. We've had to contract and pay ninety thousand dollars for an OT.
Can you not add a word to this then, on top of whatever the state schedule is?
I guess we could if, if we had lots of money, but, um-
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you're gonna spend ninety, or you spend sixty, twenty-five, you know, so, on top of whatever the state pays. I guess the question I have is, a lot of these kids are served by Medicaid, I'm sure.
A good number, yes.
Okay. Are they not getting access to occupational therapists, physical therapists, psychologists, all these things through Medicaid? I understand they have things that happen at school that have to be taken care of there, but, I mean, are, are most of these occupational therapists and physical therapists, are they not, are they not receiving that through Medicaid outside of the school?
I don't know what they receive outside the school. I just know what we're required by law to provide during school hours. And we do apply for Medicaid reimbursement in some of those areas. And that money that is reimbursed from Medicaid goes directly back into the exceptional children's program.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems to me like, you know, they would have access, a lot of the kids would have access to that stuff outside of school.
Another example, talking about exceptional children's program, we now have several psychologists, because you have to have a psychologist to administer the testing. But we don't receive funding specifically for a psychologist. We receive a pot of money that we have to stretch as far as it will go to meet all of those different personnel needs that we have.
And I understand also that the school system has to take on responsibility in a lot of cases that should be a parent's responsibility, but, you know, you gotta take care of the kids. I understand that.
Any other questions about EC funding? Okay, sorry. Moving along. Data to support the additional LEP teacher or ESL teacher. We currently have ninety-six students that have been deemed as LEP, Limited English Proficient, throughout the system, and that is across all ten schools. We have two full-time teachers. Each teacher serves five schools. One has a caseload of fifty-three children, and the other has a caseload of forty-three. And then newcomers, by definition, that means that they have been in the United States a time that is equal to or less than two years. And that number has been on the rise for the school system. We don't know exactly why. We, we've had the newcomers on the rise, but we have. Many of these students, of course, have a language barrier, and they're being referred to the multi-tiered, multi-tiered system of support, and the need for assistance of those ESL teachers at those- And the need for assistance of those ESL teachers at those meetings, that's warranted because if the child has a language barrier, guess who else does? Their parent. And in trying to meet with those parents to talk about appropriate educational services, we have to have those ESL teachers. And I will just say that ESL funding is slim to none. And again, I don't know the state's equation for funding ESL teachers, but it certainly is not adequate for the number of children that we are serving in our schools. And of course, meeting those needs continues to be a challenge with only two teachers. Data to support a school nurse, Dr. Peel touched on some of this, just with some of the health concerns that we are seeing. They, feeding tubes, children in diapers, wheelchairs, just, you know, a lot of different things we're seeing. And the number of emergency action plans continues to increase. You can see that across all of our schools, we have two hundred eighteen children with emergency medical plans or emergency health plans, and we have ten that have very serious needs. And that could be a diabetic who has to have a pump and has to be monitored, and has to have blood levels checked multiple times of the day and, and different things. We currently have five nurses split between all of our schools, but we're just seeing with some of those health needs and some of the parent concerns that an additional nurse would definitely help us better meet those health needs. The next page highlights school food service program. We have had to supplement our school food service program for a number of years. We're happy to say that that's decreased a little. At one time, we were supplementing one hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. We are projecting only having to supplement that one hundred thousand dollars for the seventeen, eighteen school year. And then, let's talk a little bit about fund balance. Again, we're not far enough, and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me ask a question about the, uh, school food service program.
Yes.
So, um, it lost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars years ago, and now it's just losing a hundred thousand, is that right? Okay, so I just, how, where does, where do you lose the money? How do you lose the money in the food service?
Food costs have increased, and student participation in the lunch program has decreased. And I'm sorry to say, but it's because of a lot of the regulations that we're held to. Sodium counts, fat counts, all those things that, that make food taste good.
Right.
Uh, we're very restricted in what can be served in our cafeterias, children...
Federal guidelines.
Yes.
Yes.
And children just don't like the taste of a lot of it. And we've had a lot of, of decline as far as participation in the school food services program.
I'm not, not advocating this at all, so don't everybody jump out of their seat, but what would happen if you shut down the cafeterias? I mean, could you do that?
We're required to feed them something.
No, I'm just saying, you know, would they, would they have, could you outsource them?
Some systems are doing that, they're going to food management companies that they contract with, Burke County being an example. Also, I have a superintendent colleague in Elkin who is heavily looking at that option. So because of this issue throughout the state, it's not just in Alexander County that we're having to supplement that program, that is what some systems are going to.
Well, Dr. Ed, what's the price of the school lunch right now?
Commissioner Reese, I'm going to guess, but I think it's about two dollars and thirty-five cents per plate. Does that sound right?
We send two thirty-five or two forty's.
Something like that.
We send several checks at a time.
One potential pitfall conceivably could be for outsourcing, I think those cafeteria workers also serve as bus drivers.
Some do, some are in dual positions. But I will say, in talking to Burke County, they were able to offer continued employment to all of their employees in that program. They didn't have a loss of benefits as far as their retirement and healthcare. So it's working nicely in that system, but obviously Burke is much larger than we are. But it is something that is being researched in, in several school systems.
How long ago did the Burke County do that?
They have been doing that, are they in their second year with that food management company? I believe they're, they're, they're closing on their second year.
It's worked great in some places.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Been disastrous in others, but the biggest exciting news is some of the restrictions on school foods potentially being lifted from Washington. I mean, that'd be an immediate impact.
Not, not that, and, and I know, I mean, not, not school food service, but my wife was the director of a preschool for a good while. Well, she took a position as the director of a daycare temporarily because there were some things needed fixing and, but, in any way. And very similar situation with daycares even, there's federal rebating essentially, or refund, you know, if the food you serve meets certain nutritional, you know, if all the food you serve meets certain nutritional standards. Well, the kids weren't eating, you know, and at this daycare, I mean, that's included. Each child is fed, and they weren't eating. You know, and the lady that, that cooked, you know, they had a cook, chef, whatever, I mean, you know, cook. Molly finally told her, make it taste good. Because we would, you know, she's like, because we would rather them eat something with a little butter and a little salt in it than to not eat. And, you know, shazam, they started eating. And, you know, and I think it's, and, and just like anything and everything, it's all been taken to an extreme. You know, yes, we Americans are all obese, we know. But I think it'll, yeah, like I say, there's some relaxation and, I mean, just, you know, I think back when I was in school and we had juice, it wasn't juice, there wasn't any juice in it, it was like cloudy-looking Kool-Aid.
Sugar water.
You know, I mean, but it wasn't clear though, it had some little cloudiness to it. But, I mean, that was a special thing, I, I, I mean, I don't ever, I never got to get juice, that was an extra. But, you know, now, you have to have a hundred percent real. And everything has to be a hundred percent real and a hundred percent this, and a hundred percent that. I mean, I understand, it's, it's...
It's a challenge.
It's been, it's been a little over the top.
It's a challenge, certainly, okay. Moving on to the next page, fund balance. As I said earlier, we're not far enough in the budget process to know an exact number, but I did include what we are projecting to use for the sixteen, seventeen year to balance the budget. The ending balance of our, as of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, will be three million eight hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. And as I've talked to some of you, I think that we are in agreement that the threshold is two million, that we cannot drop below two million in that particular line. And so, you know, do the math, we're using it at a pretty rapid pace. I will say that in the Senate budget that was released last week, it talked about the loss of flexibility to move positions. And it didn't exactly say that, but what they talked about doing is in the state teacher allotment, instead of giving us an allotment of two hundred twenty-three teachers, they are, they proposed that we break that out into K-five allotments and six-twelve allotments. And I know the reason for that was because of all the debate about, you know, the General Assembly saying, we allotted you all these teachers to get your class sizes down, and you use those for art, music, and PE teachers. You know, that huge debate, so that's where that has come from, that they will give something as specific as a K-five allotment and a six-twelve. What that means for us as a school system, Sharon Mahaffey is a very gifted chief finance officer. She knows school finance, she also knows how to move positions. I want to give you an example of what we do with instructional coaches, and I guess I am being recorded, Sharon, so the cat is out of the bag. But what we do with instructional coaches, those individuals are highly trained, highly educated teachers with master's degrees as well as National Board certification. So when you take a teacher's base pay and add those additional certifications, they make a lot more money than a beginning teacher. So we have been using a state allotted position for the instructional coaches, and then we'll use a beginning teacher to pay out of a pot such as low wealth because we want the state picking up that higher salary, instead of having to deduct those high amounts out of low wealth, Title I, whatever they are. If they, if the Senate budget passes and they give us a K-five allotment and a six-twelve, there's no flexibility in positions like an instructional coach. So we counted today, and if we can't pay our coaches the way that we have been paying, again, they're in a state position, the beginning teacher at that school was in, we, we use Title I. We're going to have to find an additional one hundred thousand dollars in the Title I pot to cover those instructional coaches' salaries. So it's that kind of moving around, shifting around, and that flexibility, losing that flexibility hurts us even more than what I've talked about already tonight.
Dr. Ed, how many instructional coaches are there?
We have one instructional coach at every school and every middle school.
Okay, so they stay, they stay at that school, nobody...
Correct, they're there full-time.
Do you have one at the high school?
We don't.
The, the fund balance, is that the tax balance and the normal fund balance, or is that...
No, that does not include any half-cent sales tax.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, let's talk about leasing devices. Beginning in the seventeen, eighteen school year, we will be completely one-to-one in grades three through twelve, and we are going to be leasing devices for grades three through eight and the early college to the tune of six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. We have requested from your group, not funding for that, but we have requested the use of half-cent sales tax money to cover those leases. Any questions? Facility needs, now talking about our half-cent sales tax, Commissioner Reese. The two thousand fourteen facilities study indicated two primary areas of concerns with our current facilities. Also, the consolidation study came back, it told us the exact same thing. We know that we have facility issues that need to be addressed at two elementary schools, the two being Sugarloaf and Taylorsville Elementary. For Taylorsville, the two thousand fourteen study said it would cost between two point two and two point four million dollars to do what needs to be done to address those concerns. And at Sugarloaf, that study indicated two point one million dollars would be needed to address those concerns in the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and some of the older parts of the building. Half-cent sales tax money totaling one point two million has been earmarked to fund technology leases and major building repairs, including phone systems, HVAC needs, roof replacements, resurfacing the tennis courts, expanding parking lots, et cetera. And then I just wanted to mention this to you, that repairs to the Sugarloaf Gym will be taking place this summer. We're going to do some work on the column replacement, gutter replacement, anchors in the foundation to level that building back to where it should be because the, the far side of the building is sinking, and the flooring, work to replace the flooring. So those things are being scheduled at the present time.
Dr. Ed, at one time, we discussed some type of debt structure for some of this. Has your board decided to move away from that, or y'all still considering that?
Our board does not seem interested in going into debt, they would like to use the monies that we have available to us. Well, I, I'll be just real honest with you, we have seen some new projections for student numbers that go as far as twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, and the declining enrollment does not appear to stop. By the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, they're estimating our school system being about forty-one hundred children.
In other words, you don't want to put any excess money, you just kind of mend these facilities for better use of words?
Correct, with the monies we have available to us.
Is there, can I, I'm gonna ask a question, I'm gonna ask the big white elephant question that everybody, not everybody, but that a lot of people have asked, that I've talked to about this. What, what made the board decide to, after, after DPI comes back with a recommendation to close Taylorsville Elementary and/or, not just or, but and/or, Sugarloaf Elementary because they both need significant renovation? We have, how many empty seats in our elementary schools across the county? It's a very large number. And like I say, I'm gonna ask a question, nobody else, I guess... Why, and I'm asking this as a citizen. Why are we considering spending over, okay, you said closing Taylorsville Elementary would have potentially saved about a half a million dollars?
Those were estimated cost savings.
Right, estimated, okay. And now, we're not, we're not only going to not save a half a million dollars, but we're gonna spend two point two to two point four million to renovate it, and then we're gonna spend two point one million to renovate Sugarloaf. And in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have four thousand plus or minus, and DPI knows that stuff somehow. I mean, I, you know, I'm...
They're pretty accurate.
I mean, Dr. Peel was in education a long time, we, I was, you know, three of us from board education for eight years. I mean, and I'm just asking the question, as a citizen and as a county commissioner, what is the thought process, because I don't underst, I don't understand the thought process that says, what is best for the children of Alexander County? Alexander County Schools' motto, children first, has been, always will be, I hope. But how can spending, you know, four point three to four point five million dollars, not saving a half million dollars, making renovations to, to two schools? I understand the communities don't want it to happen, I get it. And I don't mean anything, you know, I don't mean, I don't mean anything by, but I just don't understand the rationale, the rationale, period. And I don't think I'm the only one. If I am, then I'm obviously, but, you know, I don't think I'm the only person that's, that's wondering, that's asking this question because we don't have any money, we don't have any money, and I understand certain money has to be used for facilities. But, man, four and a half million dollars would go a long way in making the other five elementary schools, the two, you know, the other two middle schools, and the one high school in this county, better. And guess what, we have room for every student. It's not like we're, you know, I'm, I mean, I can't, you know, I don't understand the, I just don't understand. And...
Commissioner Lael, I'm sorry, I'm not a board member.
I, I know, I just, but I, you know, I just...
I don't know that I can answer that question.
Because it just, it, it makes no sense, in my opinion. Now, that's my opinion, and everybody has, you know, an opinion, and mine's worth no more than mine, but...
From a business case...
From a business perspective, from a financial perspective, from a what is best for the children, the four thousand eight hundred and six, you know, what is best for that number of children in Alexander County, four of them being mine, one more that's not there, well, almost. I can't understand, you know, to me, it seems like it's sort of, you know, hey, ship's sinking, let's take, you know, let's take a saw and cut that hole a little bigger. And hey, she'll go down a little quicker. I mean, I just don't, I don't, I don't, I just don't understand it, and that's, that's more statement.
I guess...
Just as a concern of mine.
A, a concern of mine is that we do have these, we, we are gonna continue to have these following enrollment numbers, and we, we're building another high school, or you're, you, we're moving towards building another high school with a gym, gymnasium...
Has that been decided?
No, it hasn't been decided, but it's been asked.
I think it's been discussed, in an ideal world, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
But the last page of my presentation talks about the early college, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that.
And I, and I'm not gonna mention the early college, but I guess a lot of people, myself, a lot of people that I talk to in the community, there does not seem to be, um, any reality... There doesn't seem to be a focus on reality and what is actually happening here with the population of students that we've got and the population... here with the population of students that we've got, and the population of students that they're predicting that we're gonna have, and long-term planning. And we're gonna lose more students, whether it be to people moving out of, out of Alexander County, whether it be to private schools, homeschooling, times are changing, and there doesn't seem to be an adaption to, times are changing.
Well, I will say, that regardless of the circumstance, I am committed to making sure that every child in our school system receives the best education possible.
I, and I completely agree that you are completely focused on.
Absolutely, I've never wavered on that.
And I, I don't disagree with that. I guess the thing is, is people are looking at what's happening, and, you know, where are we going?
Well, our board, I think that they're holding out, they're hoping that something happens with economic development that will turn that trend around, so that we have folks moving here of childbearing age, instead of them being educated and leaving to go to other places to get jobs. That's their hope, that's my hope, you know, I, I live here too. Not only has this school system been my life, but Alexander County has been my life. And it concerns me, but I think regardless of whether those children stay here to live and work, or whether they go somewhere else, we owe them that. They deserve a quality education and the best we can give them. And we were signing off every year for forty of our children to go to Challenger High School. And in considering that, every system around Alexander has at least one early college, and we just felt that our children deserve the same thing that the children in the surrounding counties were getting.
And I'm completely in favor of early college, and have been, and have.
I, I know, I, I hear that you've been a supporter, I hear that.
But we need, we need to sit down, and we need to, we need to come up with a plan for it. That involves us, and involves us paying for it, and how are we gonna do it?
Well, that's the last thing that I said, a joint meeting to discuss facilities will be scheduled in the near future between the school system, the commissioners, and CVCC. I think until all three of those parties get together around the same table, we are going to flounder and not know what the plan is. My folks have been getting together projections, numbers, what kind of courses we're talking about for the early college, so that we can determine exactly what is needed.
Well, and you and I had this conversation, I think my biggest concern was the size and the pace that we're growing, and I realize when the grant was written, I think it called for over several years, up to four hundred students, plus or minus. We should take that out of our high school, which is, what, fifteen hundred, give or take, fourteen, something, that drops them down.
I was gonna say, we're below fifteen hundred right now.
That gets you down to eleven hundred, and unless I'm mistaken, Challenger is only about four hundred, and you have ten feeder schools from Catawba County feeding into Challenger, and here in kind of small Alexander County, we would be that same size. You know, that, you know, I told you, that's kind of given me a little bit of heartburn that, you know, how do we do that, and what does our high school look like at that point in time? I think you got a hundred and eight coming in, upcoming freshmen.
That's how many have been approved, yes.
That's probably about a fourth of the upcoming eighth graders, plus or minus?
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, I do also think it's a good thing, but I just, you know, I know the grant wasn't funded for the operational expense.
Mm-huh.
For the first year, and I think the second year's gonna be.
Well, it's looking like we're going to miss it again, in the Senate budget, they're taking away from tier-three counties who have early colleges, and giving them, giving those funds to tier-one counties who, they were given permission without any funding, well, guess which tier we fall in? Tier two. So, again, we're probably going to be skipped with that operational cost.
So, I guess that money comes from some other?
Well, the teaching positions follow the children. So, we, when we allot, you know, just like the one hundred eight, that constitutes four teaching positions roughly, at the high school level.
Four freshman teachers that aren't at the high school that year, I mean, is that, do you have a net decrease at the high school of four, for the four that go over here with the early college?
Well, we've cut three positions at the high school, definitely at this point, and we have had one teacher to ask for a transfer to the early college. So, that would be somewhat of a wash, but, but, but all of the operational expenses are not covered.
Right.
With the student funding.
What was the, in the beginning plan, when was the, when were you first to do early colleges, was it sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen? I've heard.
Sixteen, seventeen, and then we were led to believe when, after we submitted the grant, that there would be a planning year. And then, at the last moment, we were told, no, it's not a planning year, you move forward, and that's when we had to really kick it up and get things kicked off this past August.
So, really, then, it would have been seventeen, eighteen?
That's what we were led to believe with the planning year, yes, but then.
By the time we were gonna have our first class of fifty, we'll have a hundred and fifty.
Yes, we wrote the original grant with seventy-five in the first class, and then one hundred in every year thereafter, but, yes.
Is there a requirement, Dr. Henshaw, for a certain number to go into that early college, or what's the, I know each thing has a requirement for the students to be in that program?
Mm-huh.
Is there, what's the requirements for the student, and is there a, you mentioned seventy-five or a hundred, is that just a figure that the board came up with, or is that?
That's just how we wrote the grant, that was dreaming big. We're talking, you know, amongst ourselves and with CVCC, that probably we need to scale those numbers back some to make it more realistic, so they're talking about the following year only accepting seventy-five. But again, this is fluid, we're not tied to any grant guidelines, because we didn't receive any funding. The only approval that we received was when the General Assembly said, yes, you can open your early college in Alexander, you just won't get any funding to do it.
You could back your hundred this year back to fifty?
Could we do that?
Mm-huh.
We could, do I think that would be good for us? I think it would be terrible PR. The most excitement that I've seen generated in this county thus far, in my three years, has been the early college. The parents are all about it, because they see that their children can graduate from high school with a two-year degree, and they haven't spent any money, with the exception of an activity fee.
There's a flip side of that also, the hundred students, or whatever, that you're hearing that from, there's, you know, thirty-five thousand other people out there that don't directly benefit from it, that wanna know why it costs so much money in, in the school budget, too. I mean, I, and I think the early college is a great thing, don't get me wrong, but there's, there's other part of that discussion, too, that happens.
What, what kind of figures are out there that they think we're spending on our early college?
The, the building, the facility.
None of that's been decided yet, so.
Which, it's costing you to put them over here now, correct?
Some of it, but some of it happened naturally. The teaching positions, you know, for the most part, three of the four were state-funded. So, I, I'd just be curious to, you know, those, the naysayers, I'd be curious as to how much they think that we are spending. State picked up the principal salary, and those kinds of things, so.
They picking that up next year, too?
They, there's a one-year look back, and they won't pick it up this, but then they will the following, yes.
Well, as the parent of a soon-to-finish or freshman year to early college, and they're finished in like two day, like, two more days.
They finish this week.
Yeah. It's not for every kid, I'll be the first one to tell you that, and my daughter will too. It's not for the kids that won't be. It's not for the kids that high school is the greatest memories of their life. Let me say that.
So, out of that, that one oh eight, since we've about doubled, do we see, how many of that one oh eight sticking, from what you said, I mean, because?
Some will back out, Chairman Campbell, before school starts.
There were.
What's the criteria, I mean, was there?
There's a rubric that has been developed in the grant writing, that a child has to have a certain number of points, and that's based on a lot of things. If, if the parents have gone to college themselves, if they're ESL, I mean, there's just a list, and it, their achievement scores are even factored into that.
Teacher recommendations are very.
Correct.
And I saw that information not long ago, somewhere, and I don't know where it was, but.
Well, did any of the students apply and not be accepted?
Yes, one hundred, more than one hundred thirty applied, and some just did not qualify.
About twenty-two didn't, didn't make it then.
I, I got a couple of questions I wanna go through, and I just wrote these down, and, and they're not in any kind of order, so I'll try to put them in order as I can, but, I guess, one thing I'm not happy about, about the early college is, and, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do, and you put it where you gotta put it, but the Applied Technology Center, that, that was, I mean, we discussed that for years and years and years, and we got it open, and we've got the Furniture Academy there, but there was other programs that were planned there and supposed to, to come out, to help businesses create jobs in, in Alexander County. It was not meant for the early college.
Mm-huh.
And the public had a, had a vote in that, too, because it was discussed for so long, and we've got to come up with a solution that moves them out of there, as far as I'm concerned, because.
Well, Dr. Henshaw, in my last conversation with him, he would like to have this building for the early college, and move the programs here up to the Applied Technology Building. But again, that's the three entities sitting at the same table, and discussing and working through these things.
Right, and I agree, but, well, there, there's more to that, anyway, that we can't go into right here.
I, I don't wanna get caught in crossfire, okay?
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay.
So, you're, you're projecting to take, say you've got fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred and fifty students at the high school right now?
Yes.
You're, you're looking at taking four hundred of those out, so.
Eventually, that's what the plan was, yes.
So, you're gonna drop it thirty percent or so? Why can, why, and I know you don't want these, you want them separate, but why can you not wing off one part of the high school? Because if you're gonna be down, you know, how, how many students does that high school hold, seventeen hundred?
I don't know what the maximum capacity is.
You're saying, bring it down to a thousand? Why can you not take one wing of that high school, don't let those kids even associate with each other, and have it, you know, that would solve a lot of problems right there.
And I'm not saying in the end that some of that won't be discussed, and that may be a possibility. Research tells us that the most successful early colleges are held on a community college campus, and that's what we wanted, we wanted to ensure success for the children.
But the community college campus could be over there. You know, it's very, very easy for the.
To make that a satellite campus, instead of this one?
It's ve- no, I'm just saying, it's very easy for the teachers to drive to the students, instead of the students come to the teachers.
Well, we're transporting the children.
I know, I know, I'm, I'm saying, wouldn't it be easier to have it, if you had it there, it'd be easier for ten teachers to drive there.
I think what Commissioner Mayberry's saying is the possibility of the community college actually having a campus.
Exactly.
Beside and/or what used to be part of ACHS.
In speaking with Dr. Henshaw, that's not a possibility.
That's what?
That's not a possibility.
Why?
They can't function that way, it will not permit it. There, something with the early college piece of CVCC requires it otherwise.
I guess they're not gonna buy the building there, or they won't fund the building?
Well, no.
We won't let you do this, but we're not a playboy.
We got, we got things we gotta work through here.
We do, we do.
And, and they're big, they're big, they're big issues that we've gotta come to an agreement on, all three parties.
Yes.
And we can't move, you know, head down without an eye to the future. We've gotta think about what's ha- what's gonna happen, not just to the early college, but what's, what's happening with the other schools, too? And funding, what are we gonna do? We're gonna, we got a lot of things happening.
Agreed.
And I just don't think that there's been a look past, you know, what's gonna happen next year, and maybe possibly two years down the road. Nobody wants to incorporate that into a plan, a long-term plan, and I know long-term plans change, and they're never completely accurate, but.
Are you referencing the early college, or are you referencing the school system?
Everything, everything, even economic development and what we do, so.
Well, I think, you know, the thing on the early college, you probably, as you mentioned, get all three stakeholders together.
Absolutely.
CVCC, Board of Education, and Board of Commissioners, and you, then you try to figure out capital, what's the building, where's it gonna be, where can it be? You know, I'm, I'm guessing, Dr. Peel, from your conversation with Dr. Henshaw, is it, it can't be there, or we really discourage it? Because I know we're utilizing the high school, they're participating in athletics that they want to.
Yeah, Mr. Reese, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it was my understanding it could not be.
Yeah, he alluded to, I think it was, I think I'm gonna say this right, public school, community college, like, with funding and, you know, different things, and they wanted, for the CVCC people, they want it to be somewhere that is, you know, advantageous and acceptable for the citizens, as far as getting another property somewhere else. But it needs to be in close proximity to the campus, and I think we, you know, he, we mentioned the high school, but that was kinda kicked out at that time, not to say, just as Dr. Henshaw said, that might be something looked at on the, the backside, but not automatically, you know, he's not wanting to go that route.
Maybe that could be a last resort.
Yeah.
Well, they, and they have some funding as well, which is all part of that longer piece, whenever all the entities are at the same table, but the, a, a lot of aspects of the early college drives the community college FTEs, which enables them to get some money, which enables them to put some cost back in, the operational pieces of things that are going on, so it is a, a web.
Well, and I think that Dr. Henshaw shared, when we hit the three hundred FTE mark, we actually qualify to call this a satellite campus.
And that is, I think that's happened.
Yeah.
The three hundred FTE mark?
Whatever the mark is to become a satellite campus, and with a little bit of legislative help, it's all over it right now, according to Dr. Henshaw.
Okay.
Which enables some grant opportunities.
And additional funding.
And money that proportionally from what they receive from the state, and a, a lot of things, but you said it's a very complicated issue that.
It's not gonna happen fast.
It sounds like maybe we need to re-circle the wagon on this at a later date, because this is, I don't think we're gonna get this resolved here in the C D.
Pretty big can to open up right now.
One, one last comment that I wanna make, is just, you guys have got, you've got the headwinds against you, you've got declining enrollment, you've got private schools, you've got homeschooling, you've got cuts at the legislature. You know, w- we're, we're trying to do what we can on economic development and still fund you guys, you know, you've got fewer students, the same number of schools, you're coming back and asking for more money every year, you know, and I'm not fussing about it, I'm just telling you, you are, you know you are. What's gonna happen ten years from now? Alexander County can't keep funding the budget shortfall over this number of years, so something's gonna have to change. And it's hard to justify to the public, building, or whatever we're gonna do, having another high school, when you've already got a high school up there, and, you know, you got declining enrollment there, and then you're gonna pull out four hundred more students out of it, it's hard to sell.
But we keep talking about pulling out four hundred children, they're still in our school system.
I know that, but they're not in that building, that's what I'm getting at.
Right.
Duplicating your cost of operation.
So, you, you've got an operational cost of, if I had two offices, I've got, you know, I've got one office, if I wanna have another office, then I'm doubling my cost.
Well.
And, and.
The flip side of that's that we're keeping forty in the system that have been going to Catawba County, so, all right.
Well, I think we're all aware of that, and like I said, by starting on the school board before, you know, we realize the pots of money and all of those things, I think what Dr. Peel and Commissioner Mayberry and I was have talked about, for the city, the taxpayer, I think in Alexander County is not gonna understand when we have, you know, which it's a public school campus already. Then, if we do, and this is just hypothetically, if we're talking about a whole nother campus, Then if we do, and this is just hypothetically, if we're talking about a whole nother campus, all they're seeing, man, my tax dollars, you know, what, what's going on, you know, with this? But, you know, that's something that we're going to have to all get together and, you know, we work that out.
And a lot of it comes down to, you've got, you've got to inform the public through the media, through, you know, our meetings, uh, meeting and talking to the people, you've got to inform the public on, on what we're doing, what, what the plan is. But right now, there is no plan, so we've got to come up with a plan. And, um, uh, you know, we've just got, I've got a lot of questions.
Well, we have our information ready as far as what Dr. Henshaw asked for us to gather. And that is, uh, numbers of students, numbers of courses, the kind of space needed, so we have that ready. It's just a matter of us finding a, a, a date.
I hate to go back to one question, you, you mentioned the criteria that, is it advantageous for a child to be accepted into the early college whose parents did not go to college? Is that?
They, they do receive more points on the rubric, but we accept children whose parents have gone.
Okay.
They.
Go ahead, sorry, I thought.
They do at Challenger also. My nephew's at Challenger, and his father is certainly a college graduate.
And a lot of people don't know what they're talking about Challenger, uh, just if you're listening on the radio or watching this, is, that is the Catawba County Early College. We're talking about the Alexander County Early College here. And, uh, what's the difference between the cohorts and, and the early college and?
Well, there are three things that I need to talk to you about CCP, College and Career Promise Courses. Those are college-level courses, you take them, you pass them, and you get dual credits. You get a high school credit as well as a college credit for the course. That is different from a cohort. The cohort is just what it says, it's a group that stays together, they take the same courses, have the same schedule, that sort of thing. But again, they're coming over here, they're taking college courses, and we see, if they pass those, they get dual credit, high school and college. And then the early college, those students will graduate from high school with a two-year degree. That is not possible in either of the other two programs that I spoke about.
In the cohort, they still go to Alexander Central, and then they come over here, they're bussed over here after lunch or something like that, is that correct?
They, they are brought over here depending on their course schedule, yes.
Okay.
So, the criteria for cohort is more stringent than for just early college?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But they can't receive the degree through the cohort?
They will not receive the degree. The last time that I really had my fingers in that, they could have thirteen credits.
Okay.
I hate to go back, going back to one of the original sites, what Mr. French said over the last couple of years, about a seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-dollar increase in funding over the last two years. As I like to refer to it as the horrible awful, which was the tax increase that we voted on to pass down. Did that also not create some low wealth money that we had not been receiving? I know there's a gyration of formulas in that to what they calculate low wealth money. And one of the biggest drivers of that is the tax rate. Was there not about six-hundred-thousand dollars of additional funding picked up post-tax rate increase in low wealth, or?
I can't speak to six-hundred-thousand dollars, I know that we're looking at probably about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase this next school year, but.
Next year, but I'm, after, the year after the tax is, am I wrong on that, if I am, please correct me.
There was a big net increase.
There was a significant increase, I think it was in the six-hundred dollars, about six-hundred dollars.
So, if you added that, it's a total of about one million, three-eighty-one-nine-hundred increase in the last couple of years of funding. Now, again, that's, we didn't fund that, obviously, but it was, it was an after effect of the.
They, they lost some low wealth money, and then they gained it back, and that changes from time to time, so.
At one point, I think we lost about six-hundred-thousand dollars.
That puts you back to par, and, and again, the big component of that, I think, was the tax rate was kind of put you, put it over the edge, get that money back. Okay, sorry.
I believe, I believe there's twenty-one different criteria they use in that formula.
It's kind of like a special sauce.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you all have other questions?
No, I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's just, it's a lot of in, information to digest, and of course, appreciate your coming and, you know, and I, Josh, going back to the consolidation of schools, I don't think any of us would have envied the school board in that.
Oh, absolutely not.
In that.
No, I mean, I'm not, yeah.
I'm saying I wanted to be there to make that decision.
Exactly.
So, it's your fault, but.
Yes, Dr. Peel?
It's my fault.
Two, two things, it's easy to, or easier to do when there's a lot more money, so applaud you guys for.
Well, I've never known a lot of money, so.
Kicking and stretching and squealing and whatever. The other thing I, I need to, I wanted to ask was with, uh, Student Success Center. Can you tell us a little bit about what's, what you see happening there?
I see students being a lot more successful than they were in the previous program. You know that part of the building project was a result of transitioning to a day program. When it was an evening program, operating three-thirty to six-thirty in the evenings, um, student attendance was terrible. On average, they were earning two-point-six credits per year. Do the math, they're going to be in high school a long time at that rate. So, we are certainly seeing a lot more support to those children, a lot more success, attendance has improved. Is it perfect? No, the young man who was shot last week, one of our students in that program, so. But are we doing it better? Absolutely, and we certainly have a great coordinator of that program, working with those students and families.
What kind of, really, just my curiosity, not, I guess, a whole lot about anything pertinent to this, but what, you see similar kind of numbers that you had in the day program, less, more?
Oh, we have less, uh, a marked number less, but when you look at all the absences, I don't know if fifty absences a year constitutes a student really being there much.
Also, how many students do they attend?
The last time that I spoke with the coordinator, we had seventeen enrolled. But something else that we're doing with that program, instead of an out-of-school suspension, we are offering a change in placement. So, if I get in a fight and I'm suspended for five days, my parents can opt to transport me to that particular program. I serve my five days, it does not go on my permanent record as out-of-school suspensions. It's deemed a change in placement, they don't miss instruction, they do have teachers working with them, and the loss of academic, um, work, you know, you, if you're in school doing your work, you're not behind five days when you come back from a suspension.
It feels a little more like punishment if you have to go there versus stay home.
Well, you don't get to sit home and watch television.
Yeah.
And the parents have been pretty receptive to that, I have to give the parents credit, they have, have been very receptive.
Okay.
It's because the parents don't want them watching their TV all day, the rest of their life.
I hope not.
Any other questions for Dr. Henshaw? And again, thank you for coming out with the family situation, appreciate it.
Thanks for working with me, I certainly appreciate that. Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Rick, you're back up.
I have just a few things, and then we need to.
Okay.
We do need to go into closed session now?
After, after these items.
After these items.
Uh, want to review, uh, projects, just talk a minute about those. The Applied Technology Center project is wrapping up, uh, it should wrap up by September of this year. And again, we have currently in the proposed budget, or in the, in what we've talked about for budget, where there is no current funding for early college, for additional things for early college, so it's, it's part of that. The Sure Tape Sewer Project that we've been talking about for some time should be bid pretty soon. That's a hundred percent grant to provide sewer to Sure Tape in Stony Point. Another project that I would, is one we've been talking about for some time, Community One Bank Project or, or Alexander County Sur, Services Center, or whatever we're going to call that building. Um, we've got an architect, and they're working on the basics for you, for you guys, a budget. And so, we'll, um, either late June or early in July sometime, have to have a meeting to get a direction on that project. Uh, Rocky Face, Phase Two, um, which is, will be wrapped up by the end of August. Also, in conjunction with some of those things, things we've talked about, we have applied for a sewer, for a loan from, for the Bethlehem Sewer Project, and that's in the early stages, but we've submitted the application, as we've submitted an application for a water project. That loan has also been, I mean, uh, we've applied for that loan with state, uh, low-interest money. Um, there's two other projects that we've talked about a little bit in the past, uh, that are going to be on the rise in the next couple of years. One is with Dusty Ridge, working at, with Duke Energy on a Phase Two project for part of money. The other is Wittenburg Access Area with Duke Energy, Duke Energy going after part of money for both of those. Both those projects will take personnel on the site. We also have, have talked to some, and we're looking, going, this summer, we're going to look at sewer in Stony Point, uh, to extend off the sewer that's extended in Sure Tape. And as we mentioned earlier, we talked about broadband, we're in the early stages of looking at a study on that, and we're doing our survey. And also, as we, as mentioned, the Taylor Tog, other Taylor Togs building in, in this complex, what will be the outcome, or what will be the use of that facility? And that's really the, the bulk of the projects, there are some smaller projects that we'll talk about some more later. The one other, the issue that I've mentioned a couple of times, and just, again, just want to mention it, is a COLA for county employees, there has not been a COLA since two thousand and ten. And to do a COLA, and if you, and attach September one, it would be under three hundred thousand, which I know is a lot of money, but there's been no COLA for county employees since two thousand and ten. So, um, I have five items, contractual things I need to talk with you about in closed session. It won't take very long, and so that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any, one, one real quick, uh, quick question, um, so I don't forget it. The, uh, loan or grant application for the expansion of sewer in Stony Point, and that's in addition to what we're already going to do to Sure Tape.
That's correct.
Uh, but that, that, um, when do we anticipate the deadline for that?
That'll be the summer.
Is it late summer will be the deadline?
Uh, it's, it's with the CDBG grant that, uh, the COG, we talked to the COG about, it'll be, I think it is late summer, I think it's August.
Okay.
Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, here, nothing else, uh, I entertain a motion, we go into closed session. North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one, eight, four, five, and six, Economic Development Contractual Personnel, and we will re-adjourn only to adjourn.
Make a motion, just what you stated.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Take it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of closed session, please say yes.
Yes, sir.